Good evening and thank you for joining us this evening at our city council meeting. We'll go ahead and get started. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Adamson?
Here.
Bray.
Here.
Cheetham.
Here.
Johnston.
Here.
Lurie.
Here.
Manon.
Here.
Blad.
Here. Thank you. If you would please stand for the pledge of allegiance, after which, if you would remain standing for the invocation, which will be offered by Pastor Carl Pettit from the First Baptist Church.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So we pray. God, we want to thank you for this opportunity that we have to gather in the city to take care of business, to look to the future, to deal with the present. Father, we pray that you be in this place. We invite you to come and direct and guide conversations and thoughts. Father, be with our city leadership team as they guide and direct, not only here, but be with them in their homes, bless their families. Be with this crowd tonight, God. May we see things accomplished that would further advance the things for this city that benefit this town. Thank you for blessing us. Thank you for blessing America, God. In your name we pray. Amen.
Thank you. If you are here for agenda item number 10, it has been pulled from the agenda. This is for your information. We'll move on to agenda item number three. It's a consent agenda. The following business items may be approved by one motion and a vote. If anyone member of the council so desires any matter listed can be moved to a separate agenda item. A. Minutes. Council may wish to waive the oral reading of the minutes and approve the minutes from the work session of August 9, 2018, special meeting with Pocatello Development Authority of August 15, 2018, the city council liaison work session clarification meeting of August 16, 2018, and the clarification and regular city council meetings of August 2 and 16, 2018. B. Payroll and material claims. Council may wish to consider payroll and material claims for the month of August 2018. Good evening, Joyce.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Joyce Stroshine, Chief Financial Officer for the city. Tonight I'm presenting the payroll and material claims report for the month of August. Payroll and material claims totaled $8,847,570. Payroll-related claims totaled $3,500,502. We had changes in filled positions of a decrease of five in the full-time status, an increase of one in the half-time status, and a decrease of 18 in the part-time status, and an increase of one in the seasonal part-time status, for an overall decrease of 21 filled positions. Vendor claims totaled $5,347,68. I've listed some key large vendor claims. Valley Slurry Seal, $297,187. This was for Street/City Hall for the Micro Seal Services. Mickelson Construction Incorporated, $159,106. Street Water Departments, Asphalt, Micro Seal, Road Base, WPC, Dig, Backfill Irrigation Main Line. Then we have Avol Software Corporation, $19,500. That was for Project Docs for Tier Software for Building Plans Storage. And this was paid from the capital contingency funds. We have two payments paid to Zion's Bank for, one was for $1,306,547. This was for the WPC bond, 2012 D Series. This is a principal and interest payment. Then, $1,128,152 for the WPC bond, 2015 A payment. And that is both for principal and interest. This report explains 92.43 percent of all the vendor claims for the month. On the back of the report, I provide you information about the August purchase card activity. We had 1,324 transactions for the month totaling $379,618. And we had 149 cardholders who used their card this month. We had eight purchase agents who had monthly totals greater than 10,000, and the types of their expenditures are listed for your review. This concludes my report.
Any questions for Joyce? Thank you, Joyce.
Thank you.
Move to C. ADA Grievance Committee reappointment. Council may wish to confirm the mayor's reappointment of Dr. Roger Bowles to continue his service as a member of the ADA Grievance Committee. Dr. Bowles' term will begin September 16, 2018, and will expire September 16, 2020. D. Airport Commission reappointment. Council may wish to confirm the mayor's reappointment of Rhonda Naffs to continue her service as a member of the Airport Commission. Ms. Naffs' term will begin August 17, 2018, and will expire August 17, 2020. E. Parks and Recreation Advisory Board appointment. Council may wish to confirm the mayor's appointment of Rachel Levy to serve as a member of the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. Replacing Daniel Parrish, whose term expired. Ms. Levy's term will begin September 7, 2018, and will expire September 7, 2020. F. Pocatello Arts Council reappointment. Council may wish to confirm the mayor's reappointment of Kathy Brower to continue her service as a member of the Pocatello Arts Council. Ms. Brower's term will begin September 8, 2018, and will expire September 8, 2021. G. Sister City Committee appointment. Council may wish to confirm the mayor's appointment of Katie Cooper to serve as a member of the Japanese Sister City Subcommittee, replacing Dana Loveland, who resigned. Ms. Cooper's term will begin September 7, 2018, and will expire February 17, 2021. H. Council Decision Farmhouse Estates Short Plaid Approval. Council may wish to adopt this decision approving a short plaid for farmhouse estates which replats approximately 1.72 acres of land into one large residential lot. Subject to conditions, the property is located off of Mona Vista Drive. Mr. Mayor. Councilwoman Adamson.
May I remove that we approve the consent agenda?
Second. We have a motion by Adamson and a second by Johnston. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Adamson?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Cheetham?
Yes.
Lurie?
Yes.
Manon? Yes.
Thank you. We'll move to agenda item four, Communication and Proclamations. We have four proclamations tonight. The first one will be Constitution Week will be read by Councilwoman Linda Lurg. Kind Community Week will be read by Councilwoman Bina Manon. National Recovery Month will be from Councilmember Roger Bray, and Assistance Dog will be read by Councilmember Rick Cheetham.
Hey.
Why are we going to screw something up? Linda?
Ready. Okay. Whereas the Constitution of the United States of America, the guardian of our liberties, embodies the principles of limited government in a republic dedicated to rule by law. And whereas September 17, 2018 marks the 231st anniversary of the framing of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention, and whereas it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition to this magnificent document and its memorable anniversary, and to the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate it, and whereas public law 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America designating September 17 through 23 as Constitution Week. Now therefore, I, Brian C. Blad, Mayor of the City of Pocatello, do hereby proclaim the week of September 17 through 23, 2018, as Constitution Week, and ask our citizens to reaffirm the ideals the framers of the Constitution had in 1787 by vigilantly protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us through this guardian of our liberties and remembering that lost rights may never be regained.
Do you'd like to say a word?
I'm representing the daughters of the American Revolution. Pocatello, we're the Yith chapter. And our aim is education and patriotism and patriotic preservation. And as one of those things that we're trying to do on September 17 at 1:30 p.m. at the federal courthouse on the steps of the federal courthouse, if you've ever been there, for a good reason, there's a Liberty Bell on the front steps. And when the naturalization ceremonies take place, the new citizens are asked to go out and ring that bell of liberty as they're standing with their certificate in their hand of their new citizenship. So on September 17 at 1:30 p.m., we're going to have bells across America. We're DAR groups all across America are going to be ringing a bell at 2:00 p.m. our time, 4:00 p.m. Eastern. And we're going to have a ceremony right there on the steps with the bell. We're very fortunate that Pocatello has one of the two bells that are in the state of Idaho, right here in our very own city. So you're all invited to come. All of you are invited to come at 1:30 on September 17 to begin Constitution Week. Thank you very much.
What's your name?
Pardon me?
What's your name?
Lynn Ryd. Thank you.
All right. Next, Ray. Frank, can you do this? Whereas bullying, negativity, intolerance, and hate can happen to children and adults alike at any time, whether it's at school, work, online, or in the community. And whereas these issues threaten the physical and emotional safety of the citizens in our cities and in our country, and whereas various committees, groups, and individuals have come together to instead create positive empowering experiences for our youth and adults by teaching and promoting kindness as a way of life. And whereas kindness, the quality of being friendly, generous, and considerate can go a long way toward making our schools, neighborhoods, communities, and our world better places. And whereas we all have a choice every day to show kindness to others, both in our thoughts and our actions, to teach the value of being kind-hearted, to be role models of kindness, and to stand up and say kindness matters in Pocatello, Chabix, and Banna County. Now therefore, the undersigned do hereby proclaim September 17 through 23, 2018 to be Kind Community Week in Pocatello, Chabix, and Banna County, and urge our citizens to be more than bystanders when it comes to kindness. Make the choice every day to be kind and integrate kindness into your daily lives.
Would you like to say a few words?
Maybe.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Mayor Blad. Thank you, council members. I'm Courtney Fisher, and I'm with Rainbow Maldonado, and we're the co-founders of Founding Directors of Kind Community. We owe a huge, enormous debt of gratitude to the city of Pocatello, Mayor Blad, and all of the council members who have just generously supported our efforts to, really, it's not about creating a kind community, it's about showcasing a kind community. We want to invite you all. This is going to be our fourth annual community-wide celebration on September 17. After you go to the bell-ringing ceremony, please mark your calendars to come down to Old Town. For the second year in a row, we'll be in Old Town Pocatello, with the gracious acceptance of the city to close the Center Street Underpass for the second annual year, up to Main Street and along North and South Railroad Avenue. We're just going to have a community festival that celebrates where we live and who we live here with. We will have a ribbon cutting with the Pocatello-Chabix Chamber of Commerce. So we would love, Mayor Blad has joined us on stage every year for that, we'd love for you to join us again. And then it's a family-friendly event that will have activities, and we're having a glow party in the underpass with DJ Adrian. So bring your kids out. It's just going to be a really fun celebration. And thank you for, we will protect the new structure of the underpass. We have been told what we can and cannot do, and we will respect that. And we're really looking forward to having the first community event where people can really come and see that handiwork firsthand. So thank you so much.
What time is the ribbon cutting?
The ribbon cut, the event starts right at 5:00. And so we have the ribbon cutting. We did the pledge and proclamation reading onstage, and then the ribbon cutting. So 5:15. And the event goes until 9:00 p.m.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Whereas behavioral health is an essential part of health and one's overall wellness. And whereas prevention of mental and substance use disorders works, treatment is effective, and people recover in our area and around the nation. And whereas preventing and overcoming mental and substance use disorders is essential to achieving healthy lifestyles, both physically and emotionally. And whereas we must encourage relatives and friends of people with mental and/or substance use disorders to implement preventive measures, recognize the signs of a problem, and guide those in need to appropriate treatment and recovery support services. And whereas, to help more people achieve and sustain long-term recovery, the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services, the Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration, the White House Office of National Drug Control Policy, and Recovery Fest invite all residents of Pocatello, of the Pocatello area, to participate in National Recovery Month activities at Old Town Pavilion in Pocatello, Idaho on September 14 from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. Now therefore, Brian C. Blad, Mayor of the City of Pocatello, does hereby proclaim the month of September 2018 as National Recovery Month in Pocatello, and calls upon the people of Pocatello to observe this month with appropriate programs, activities, and ceremonies supporting this year's theme. Join the voices for recovery. Invest in health, home, purpose, and community. Signed, Brian C. Blad, Mayor of Pocatello.
Do you want to say a few words?
Okay. So I am Joanne Martinez, and this is BJ Stonesland, and Denise Friar. And we are part of the Recovery Fest Committee. And it's a great honor that you guys have signed this proclamation and that in our community we can celebrate recovery. It's just really important that our community members can get together, community agency, our people, and just share their resources, and share treatment possibilities, and share their hope and stories that recovery is possible. And Recovery Fest is just a great event to do that. We'll have a band. We have some food. We'll have the Weekend Warriors, which is a sober group that'll come down and help us cook some food. And we will have some door prizes and some kids' games. And it'll just be a really nice event downtown with a lot of support. So we invite you guys to come, everybody else to come as well. September 14 at Old Town Pocatello from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. And substance abuse just really impacts our community, and mental health issues really impacts us all. And so we just really have a great community to come together. And it's important to let people know that they can recover, treatment is available, and we do have resources for them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Whereas assistance dogs transform the lives of their human partners who have disabilities. And whereas, they serve as devoted companions, helpers, aides, best friends, and close family members. And whereas, assistance dogs include service dogs, guide dogs, hearing alert dogs, psychiatric service dog, and alert seizure response dogs. And whereas, guide dogs assist people with vision loss, leading those individuals around physical obstacles and to destinations such as seating, crossing streets, entering and exiting doorways, elevators, stairways, et cetera. And whereas, service dogs assist people with disabilities with walking, balance, dressing, transferring from place to place, retrieving and carrying items, medication reminders, opening doors and drawers, pushing buttons, room searches, pulling wheelchairs, safety checks, and aiding with household chores such as putting in and removing clothes from the washer and dryer. And whereas, hearing alert dogs alert people who are deaf or hard of hearing to the presence of specific sounds such as doorbells, telephones, crying babies, sirens, another person, buzzing timers or sensors, knocks at the door, as well as smoke, fire, and clock alarms. And whereas, seizure alert seizure response dogs are trained to alert and/or respond to seizures. And medical alert, medical response dogs alert or respond to oncoming medical conditions such as heart attack, stroke, diabetes, epilepsy, panic attack, anxiety attack, post-traumatic stress. And whereas, recognition of assistance dogs raises awareness of the selfless way all types of assistance dogs and individuals with disabilities to live independently in their community, enjoying family and friends, community activities, recreation, and employment. Now therefore, I, Brian C. Blad, Mayor of the City of Pocatello, do hereby proclaim the month of September 2018 as Assistance Dog Month in Pocatello, and urge the citizens of Pocatello to become educated on the importance of assistance dogs and their significance in our community.
Want to say a word to? Yeah, I'll keep it short. What this really reflects is teamwork. And I can honestly say, living here in Pocatello, we do a very good job as citizens to respect that working relationship. This proclamation helps to raise awareness and keep this very important issue on everyone's radar. It's critically important to remember that we're part of the team, we're completing essential life tasks that are important. So it's critically important to recognize how important these dogs are to those of us that really need them. So I'm very appreciative that Mayor Blad has demonstrated some leadership here in proclaiming the month of September as Assistance Dog Month. So I appreciate it. Thank you. You know, even professors can keep it short. Thank you. One more part of communications. I noticed we have a scout out there. You want to stand up and tell us what troop you're from?
I'm from Troop 323.
323. Thank you very much for being here. Not seeing any others. If there's some that are sitting behind some bigger people, raise your hand. Like they would do it anyway. Okay, we'll move on to agenda item number five is a calendar review. Council may wish to take this opportunity to inform other members of the council of upcoming meetings and events that should be called to their attention. On September 12 will be a special meeting and tour of the Riverside Golf Course. On September 13, 9:00 a.m. work session immediately followed by an executive session. September 18, 10:00 a.m. special meeting, Fire Department Master Plan. September 20, 3:00 p.m. city council liaison work session clarification meeting. September 20, 6:00 p.m. regular council meeting. Other events, September 7, Center Street ribbon cutting at the Underpass, Center Street Underpass. We'll be cutting the ribbon, and Carsville will open that back up after the repairs. September 8 Splash Dance for Dogs Event at Ross Park Aquatic Complex. September 8, Simplot Fund Run. Contact the Community Recreation Center for more information. As a reminder, Zoo Idaho will be opened on weekends only, 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. through October 28. School has started, so please remember to slow down in school zones. We'll move on to agenda item number six is a public hearing, fiscal year 2018 budget amendments. This time has been set aside for council to receive comments from the public on proposed amendments of the fiscal year 2000...I grabbed the wrong one.
Oh.
Amendments to the fiscal year 2018 budgets. An ordinance has been prepared for council's consideration at the end of the meeting on agenda item 17B. I declare the public hearing open.
Hey. Joyce Stroshine, Chief Financial Officer for the city. The 2018 budget adopted in August of 2017 was devolved with anticipated grants and estimated revenues. The city elects to adopt a restrictive budget and to amend in detail for unplanned revenues. Tonight, the Finance Department is requesting additional budget authority for expenditures related to unforeseen revenues and use of reserves in seven funds. The Finance Department is requesting 18 amendments to the General Fund, one amendment each to the Street Fund, Science and Environment Fund, Water Fund, Utility Billing Fund, Retirement Payout Fund, and the Police Grant Fund. The amendments to the General Fund were related to unexpected grants to the Police Department, Fire Department, Animal Services Department, and Parks Department. The largest amendment was for the construction of the Greenway Trail from Farm Bureau to Mona Vista, which totaled $433,134. It is funded by an ITD grant, and the match was provided by the Port Knif Greenway. The remaining amendments are related to expenses which are funded by reimbursements for the mayor and council, police, fire, and fire departments. The largest amendment was for $500,000 for the potential reimbursements from the state of Idaho for firefighting assistance. This authority, if adopted, will be held back until the confirmation of reimbursement occurs. The Street Fund will use $100,000 in reserves for the expenses to repair settling on South Valley Road. The Science and Environment Fund requests additional authority for the Utah State University Port Knif River Project. It will use $19,429 in reserves to fund the expense. The Water Fund amendment is for the replacement of an ATV with plow. This expense is financed by the insurance reimbursement. The Utility Billing and Retirement Payout Funds require amendments for an unplanned retirement. The Retirement Payout Fund has reserves to fund the retirement, so the authority provides for the entry to record the transfer. The Utility Billing Fund receives the funds but needs authority to expend the payout funds to the employee. The final amendment is for the Police Grant Fund. The authority provides for the purchase of light bars and is funded by the BERN grant. The total for all amendments is $1,139,205. This amendment process began with two required public notices on August 22 and August 29 in the Idaho State Journal. Ashley Lindon Welsh, Senior Accountant, provided a detailed discussion on August 9. And at the end of tonight's meeting, the council will consider the amended ordinance. This concludes.
Thank you. Any questions for Joyce? Joyce, have you received any correspondence?
No, I have not.
Have we received any in the
No, sir.
Office? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
We would look for any testimony of those supporting the application, any testimony of those uncommitted to the application, any testimony of those opposed to the application. Okay, then there's no reason to offer rebuttal time. So with that then, I declare the public hearing closed. Do I need to use my gabber?
If you would, sir.
Yeah.
Because the ordinance has been prepared.
Well, it will be prepared at the end, yeah. If I was a scout, I would have been pounding on that thing earlier too, so. Anyway, all right. Agenda item seven is public hearing, rezone by contract, 1900 Block of Anderson Lane. 9100. 9100 Block of Anderson Lane. What did I say? 1900? 9100 Block of Anderson Lane. This time has been set aside for council to hear comments from the public concerning a request by Kenneth Horsey, represented by Rocky Mountain Engineering and Surveying, to rezone by contract property located at 9100 Block of Anderson Lane, south of Pocatello Creek Road, from residential medium-density, single-family to light industrial for self-service storage and an outdoor storage area for recreation vehicles and boats. At their meeting on August 8, 2018, the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of the request with conditions. I declare the public hearing open. Council, have you had any ex parte contact or communication with this agenda item? Okay. Thank you. Then, oh, you've got 10 minutes, no more than that.
Good evening, Mayor and council. My name's Mitchell Gurr. I'm with Rocky Mountain Engineering and Surveying, 600 East Oak. I'll try to be brief. I think we covered this in great detail at the CDC public hearing, and hopefully your packets kind of summarize that process and you have a good idea of what the project is. But one thing I would like to just point out, you know, on the surface, it seems like a big request to kind of change a residential property to a light industrial zoning. But if you kind of look in a little bit deeper at this area, you'll see that maybe that's not such a crazy idea or request. So the project's located kind of south of Satterfield Drive and Pocatello Creek Road. It's on the east end of Pocatello. The county kind of runs, starts at Anderson Lane. So we're just kind of on the outside reaches of Pocatello. And that proximity, or where that parcel is located, has made it a little problematic to develop because utilities and things are not readily available. Access has been a challenge. And so this project has, or this property has been proposed for development a few different times, but has never really found something that could be successfully fit into that area. So with that, I just want to point out kind of the surroundings. So we do have, there is a residential neighborhood that is kind of near the entry. So the way this project will be configured is we'll have an in-road and an out-road. So the in portion of this project will kind of run behind this residential neighborhood. There's going to be a screening fence and some buffering along There's going to be a screening fence and some buffering along that neighborhood, and the resident that is located at this, at that location, Mr. Marchand, attended the public hearing and spoke in favor of the project, and so he's the most, realistically most impacted by the proposal that we see. This property here is an existing twin home. It's owned by the Andersons, who were involved in the transaction with this particular property. As you move south, we have the LDS Church Ball Field, and when we originally proposed this project, the church had a restriction on this property, a deed restriction, for certain developments, which would include the storage units. As we worked with the church, we proposed some things that would make that project acceptable for them, and they have agreed to remove the restriction and allow us to proceed with this project. So I'd like to say they're in support of the project, but they're not, they're just not in opposition to the project at this point. So they're not going to do anything to preclude us from being able to develop as we are proposing. So as you kind of look around this area, again, you kind of see some industrial shops, a parking lot, you know, storage, outdoor storage, that kind of stuff. This property here, as you move south, is formerly the Booth Barn, it's now a church, but that's kind of been a commercial type, you know, operation in that location. This property here to the south is Mr. Horstley's business. He operates his business, his electrical contracting business out of that property there. So as you move around, there's a couple of residents here that were the Anderson family, and we did hear some testimony from one of those residents related to drainage, and I think through this project, we'll be able to help that drainage situation some, and we have some areas where we can hopefully make that situation a little bit better. A lot of the drainage isn't necessarily the result of this project, but others that have happened above and some existing city streets and things that have kind of created some drainage issues in the area that we will have an opportunity to resolve with this project. Again, she didn't speak in opposition, she was in favor, I think, in general, but just raised those concerns. We have another project here, a property that is kind of used as an outdoor storage contracting type overflow area, and so that's how that's been used. Our subject property has been used kind of as a contracting yard, they overflow store equipment and supplies for construction activities and things like that. And over the last few years, Mr. Horstley has worked very hard to kind of clean that property up, and if you, you know, if you've had an opportunity to get by there, you can kind of see how it has changed. I think if we looked at street view, you can kind of see how some of the older pictures of the property that have kind of changed over time. I don't know if we've got a good, if I can get a good shot of it, but essentially, there's a, well, I don't have a good shot, but it's been used for basically contractor operations. So it's kind of, what we're proposing here is reasonably consistent with that use. So there were some neighbors across the street, and I think, again, they've voiced some support of the application. We had some, a couple of other neighbors from this subdivision that came in support of the application. So I, one thing I would say, and this is a very unusual thing, when you're requesting a zone change, even from, say, commercial to residential, or a down zone, usually we get a fair amount of people out with concerns and voice their opposition. And, you know, as far as we're aware, and I understand there's been one received, but we had a fair number of people come. Everyone was in favor of the proposal, certainly most of the residents in that area, and maybe we'll hear from some today that have some additional concerns. And I would just point to the fact that Planning and Zoning reviewed the application pretty in quite a bit of detail. They attached some conditions to the proposal, which we're in agreement with, and they recommended unanimously for this project. And so, again, we just ask that you listen to your Planning and Zoning Board, and hopefully, you know, we'll have some more support again. It's very difficult to get people out multiple times to support a project, but there was good support at the Planning and Zoning public hearing, and we hope that you'll review that information and offer approval for the project. And I'll be available for questions if we need or for rebuttal.
Super. Any questions for Mitch Reiner?
The fence is six feet tall.
Yes, solid.
Solid. And what type of construction will that be?
So for sure, in this area, which would be on the west side and kind of on the south side of the church, it'll be a solid masonry fence, very similar to what you would see on Alameda Road, so, you know, kind of that look and feel. Some of the, maybe the fencing that's going to be on this side might not be that solid, it might be like a side obscuring fence, like a vinyl fence or something like that, on the east side of the project, which would border, which is what borders the county.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Matthew Lewis, Senior Planner with the city. Just like to add just a few items. The current zoning would allow construction of single-family homes with a minimum lot size of 5,000 square feet. Townhomes in groups of two or greater with a minimum lot size of 4,000 square feet, and duplexes with a minimum lot size of 8,000 square feet. Saff estimates that 15 to 22 residential units may be possible if developed under the current zoning designation. Traffic impacts could be greater with residential development versus the proposed units. The use may have a low impact in noise and traffic generation depending on hours of operation. And I'd just like to point out, under the findings of fact and the conditions that were recommended by the Planning and Zoning Commission, that they did want to have the council address the hours, and I think that's under condition number four. A small portion of the property is in a designated floodplain. As such development is permitted, provided existing elevations are maintained, the elevation will be reviewed as part of a building permit application. Notice of the public hearing was mailed to political subdivisions and all property owners within a 300-foot radius of the external boundaries of the subject property in order that they may provide comment on proposed contract zoning requests for both the planning and zoning in this hearing. Notice was also published in the Idaho State Journal and a sign was posted on the subject property adjacent Pocatello Creek Road. Saff has received two written correspondence since the Planning and Zoning Commission public hearing. These were provided to the council at the pre-agenda meeting. Based on review of the application, the specific location, public testimony, and tax filings of fact, the Planning and Zoning Commission recommends by unanimous vote approval of the contract rezone request with the nine conditions that are attached in your packets. That concludes my presentation, Mayor and Council. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
You mentioned on the hours of operation that we needed to address that. What would be your recommendation for a normal and typical hour?
Yeah, I think in this case, because you do have the residential and stuff, that's why, that's why the hours of operation are of subject. You know, from the public hearings, comments that were made, and talking with Mr. Horstley, I think what would be reasonable would be 6:00 AM to 10:00 PM at night. So that would be, I think, a reasonable time.
Any other questions for Mitch? Matt, you gave us two forms of correspondence. Has there been any others that you've received?
No, Mayor.
Have we received any in the clerk's office?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And we would look for any testimony supporting the application.
Mike Seibert, 1665 Pocatello Creek Road. And this area of our community is drastically under-served by storage-type facilities, especially places where you can take your expensive boats, your motorhomes, when you're out playing and bring them home, park them somewhere, secure. And right now, you have to take them like the other side of town, and they're not all that secure. This look like to me, it's an upscale facility. It fits into the area very well, and it's only like 400 units. And I was looking at some market analysis on this area, and we're probably underserved by about 800 units in this area of town. And with the growth we're going to be getting on the northeast corner of our community, it's going to be a lot more than that. On the hours of operation, when you go out and you play all weekend, you're coming home late, and you like to go maybe drop your boat off or whatever, instead of parking in the street with your car, a lot of times it's 10 o'clock at night when you're getting in. And so your hours of operation should be at least 10 o'clock at night. And in the morning, if you're going to pick something up, you have something in storage or you're a contractor or something, you need to pick that stuff up at 6 o'clock to get out and get to work. So I like to see it extended hours of operation. And Mr. Horstley and Mitch, they, looks like they did a pretty good design, and it fits into this area of our community very well, and it actually really cleans up the property.
Thank you. Any others in support of the application?
My name is Todd Anderson. I own the property that borders the development on the west side, which is a commercial building. And so as far as impact, I'm probably one of the people that would be impacted the most, and I'm in favor of this development. My family sold the property to Mr. Horstley, and everything that Mr. Horstley's done is first-class and upscaled, and I'd like to see this development go forward. I believe it would be an improvement to the area, which has just been a weak patch for the last 50 years. And I think that Mr. Horstley has addressed my only concern, which was runoff onto my property, and I'm sure that this development will be an improvement to the area and much needed.
Super, thank you. Any others in support of the application?
I'm Sheila Griffiths, and I'm in support of it. I came to the zoning meeting, so you have a letter from me, but I am in concern of the floodage that comes down out of canyons when it rains, runs across Pocatello Creek Road and down our lane. It is so bad that in the letter, it talks about how much Ralph has spent just this year to repair the road from runoff, and some of that runoff runs through what he has proposed. So if it doesn't run through that property, which of course he will build it up to protect his property, which he should do, but now where's that water going to go? If it runs right down the side of the property, it will go into our pump house that Todd uses and us, and it will fill it up because it's a below-ground pump house. And the other problem is, is someone came up and fixed the road because it was starting to break up, but when they fixed it, they leveled it a little so that the runoff went more into our field rather than down the road that washed into their property. So the cities, or the county, I'm not sure who came up, whoever fixed it made it so our floodage is worse, which causes mud to come down and fill in. Pretty soon, that mud will have it filled into where now it's going into our basement rather than just in our field and across the road and across where this storage unit is. So my thing isn't that, this shouldn't even be all of Ralph's problem, it should be the city and the county, because when you go up Pocatello Creek, there's a road that says it starts the county. That's after the flooding. And so, but when you talk to the county, the county says it's the city problem. When you talk to the city, they say it's the county's problem. So all three of you need to work together to solve this issue that was created by all the subdivisions that have got in and made it so that this water collects right here and prevent it from causing major damage to us. So, but like they said, Ralph will make a beautiful project, and he says that he will work to solve this problem, but he really needs the city and the county to work with.
Mr. Mayor? We're going to blame the county.
I said that that was the quote.
There's no question whose problem it is in our minds, so yes.
Could I ask clarification? Where is your home on this picture?
My home is the first one down the lane.
So the lane is average?
You can point with this right here.
See, I was, this is our storage, and I'm not sure if it's here in the tree.
Right there.
Right here? Okay, so you only see part of the roof because of all the trees. And the wellhouse is like right here, because he, Ralph, pulls into his property right now through here, and it's, he turns right at the wellhouse.
So is that a jag on your, is that the wellhouse?
It will fill it up. Pardon?
Is the little notch that's in the drawing, is that your wellhouse?
Yes.
That little notch right there?
Yes, it is.
Yeah, so that really needs to be protected. So, any other questions?
Thank you.
Thanks.
Any others in support of the application?
My name is Stephen Sumrau. I live in that subdivision where you see the round circle there. My yard, back of my yard goes out into the upper ball field. I rent from Todd that unit that's adjacent to the church parking lot, and I'm in favor of it. The reason I'm in favor of it is, if it's already zoned for residential and that many units could be put there, I see a lot more problem of coming and going, noisy, debris left out, people not taking care of their places, which would tear down the valuation of our area. The other thing is, storage units, generally, people don't go there every day. Like if you're in a home living there, you're going to be in and out, what, three or four times a day. So it's going to be minimal use, I feel, and during the wintertime, they're probably not, very seldom ever going to pull the units out of there till the good weather comes. Now, as far as the drainage goes, I do feel that's city, county, whoever's responsible, because the water comes down off the hill on the north side of it, and it does run down that lane. However, Mr. Horstley's willing to do what he can to control the water, where I have lived there for 40 years, and as far as I know, nothing's ever been done by the people that live there to control that water. So I know it's an issue, but why wasn't it addressed before by the homeowners? It must not have been too bad. And so I'm in favor as far as the area. It was not a very good site, and a lot of debris and stuff was there, and in the time Horstley has been there, he has totally cleaned up his shop and his property there. It's like going to a million-dollar home. So I think it would be a great improvement for us. Thank you.
Super, thank you. Once again, I'm going to go on the record, the county is responsible for it. Once again, I'm going to go on the record, the county is responsible for it. No, you can't. Thank you, though. We'll go ahead. Any others in support of the application? Okay, any uncommitted to the application? Any opposed to the application?
Always got to be somebody.
That's all right. Come on up here.
I live at, my name's Larry Wardlow. The mayor knows me, unfortunately. And I live at 2380 Loane Circle. I live right up at there at the, well, fortunately or unfortunately, it's next to the chief of police. And most of the time, it's good. And I'm opposed to it because there's going to be way too much traffic in and out of there, and the incoming traffic's going to be right behind my house. And I just don't, as big a construction area as that is, units, how many units there, regardless of what people think, there's going to be more people coming in and out of there than you might think once he gets this thing completed. And I'm concerned with property values. I don't know what, what, if other people moving into the area want to buy a house up in that area, and they see that big storage area, they may have concerns about moving there because of that. And I'm sure if this goes through and it gets built, the taxes are going to go up. And if my taxes go up, being a person that's on a fixed income, that's not going to be good for me to have, to pay higher taxes for somebody in behind me making money. Thank you.
Thank you, Larry. I think Larry would agree with me. It's the county's issue on that funding thing, too. Any, any others opposed to the application? Okay, then we would give Mitch an opportunity for any rebuttal time.
Thank you again. So I think kind of the drainage issue, again, we're in the, the kind of the concept phase of this project, so if you, if you zoom in, you know, the lane that we're talking about is here. We're providing some buffering along that lane that could serve as a kind of a conveyance channel for some of that stormwater. So I, I think there's an opportunity to maybe make the situation better for certainly the residents in that area and Mr. Horsley's project without a lot of additional expense to the property owners. So when there's a project there, we certainly have opportunity to address those issues. And I think, I think we'll be able to make it better. We're aware of that situation. We're, we need to study that in a little bit more detail, but I think we have an opportunity to improve the drainage. Just want to make sure that, you know, we're clear on the operations. I don't think Mr. Horsley believes that the, that a, you know, a 7 to 7:00 PM limit would be successful. So what Matt recommended, I think, is acceptable. That, we think, will protect the residents in the area. And we were told in the public hearing that, you know, the ball fields have activities throughout the summer much later than that. And so there's a lot of activity in this area that is related to that facility as well. So it's not going to be just our, our project. So as far as the opposition that we heard, one of the things that we've done to be a little, I guess, aware of what's happening, we, we aren't staging any vehicles or anything on Pokatello Creek Road. What we would do is pull in off the road, and our gate to the facility will be inside the project. And so, you know, there might be a vehicle here or two, but we have a lot of staging area there. It's, it's much safer. It's not going to impact the traffic. And I think, again, as Matt alluded to, if this were developed in residential, you know, the statistics show that storage unit has a much less traffic impact than what a residential development would have under the same situation. As far as the property values go, I guess we don't have a lot of control over that. So I don't think his use is changing much. So I don't know exactly how his taxes would be affected, but we don't, we don't control what the assessor does as far as that goes. So otherwise, I can answer questions. We again, hope that you will approve the project as presented. We think we've kind of done a good job addressing most of the neighborhood concerns. I don't want to say this is like an upscale storage, but we're calling it luxury storage. So it's going to be a nicer facility than some of the others you see around town.
Mitch, is there a stormwater pond here?
Yeah, we're, we're showing a stormwater pond down in this kind of southern area. Then that would be conveyed over to the, kind of the creek ultimately. The creek kind of runs down through here as well, so creek's down in here.
Okay. Any more questions for Mitch? Okay. Thank you, Mitch. I declare the public hearing closed. Counsel, this items before you. How do you wish to proceed? Councilwoman Adamson.
Mayor, I move that we approve the request with the conditions noted, including operating hours of 6:00 AM to 10:00 PM.
Second. We have a motion by Adamson and a second by Bray. Connie, would you please call the roll?
Adamson? Yes. Bray?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Manon?
Yes.
Thank you. We'll move on to agenda item eight, short plat Elm Street subdivision. Carol Klingberg, CO Jim Price, represented by Rocky Mountain Engineering and Surveying, has submitted a short plat application to subdivide 0.30 acres, more or less into two residential lots. The proposed subdivision is located at the intersection of West Elm Street and Taft Avenue and is to be called Elm Street Subdivision. The property is located within a residential medium-density family, multifamily zoning district. Councilman Bray?
Mayor, I move that we approve this requested plan.
Second.
We have a motion by Bray and a second by Adamson. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Bray?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Manon?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda item nine, final plat Trail Creek Estates, Division Two, McCormick Ranch, LLC, represented by Rocky Mountain Engineering and Surveying, has submitted a final plat application to subdivide 13.34 acres, more or less, into 34 residential lots. The proposed subdivision is located on Chaplin Place and Magellan Loop and is located, and is to be called Trail Creek Estates, Division Two. The property is located within a residential low-density zoning district. Councilwoman Adamson.
Mayor, I move that we approve the final plat for Trail Creek Estates, Division Two.
Second.
We have a motion by Adamson and a second by Manon. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Adamson?
Yes.
Manon?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda item 11, agreement, contract employee insurance benefits. Council may wish to approve and authorize the mayor's signature, subject to legal department review, the following agreements, contracts for city employee insurance benefits during fiscal year 2019. A, Blue Cross of Idaho Medical Insurance New Agreement reflects a 11.97% increase in premiums. B, dental, Delta Dental Dental Insurance Renew 0% increase. C, VSP Vision Insurance Renewal 0% increase. D, Wage Works Flex spending account, $25 per month fee and $4 PEPM fee and E, Sumeria Life Insurance Change of Carrier will decrease the cost of the, to the city by 30%, 1.62 PEPM plus 30, 33 cents PEPM fee, and increase basic life insurance coverage to the employee from $11,000 to $15,000. All costs for insurance contracts have been itemized in fiscal year 2019 budget. Councilman Bray.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the employee insurance agreement benefits and that we authorize you to sign, subject to legal approval.
Second.
We have a motion by Bray and a second by Johnston. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Bray?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Manon?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda item 12, Construction Services Incorporated Contract Amendment 2405 Garrett Way Project. Council may wish to consider a request from street operations staff to approve a guaranteed maximum-priced GMP amendment to the city's contract with Construction Services Incorporated for partial remodel of 2405 Garrett Way Project. The GMP was listed in the original contract approval, approved by council on April 19, 2018, is Exhibit A, which was not available at the time. The construction manager has submitted a complete, a completed GMP in the amount of $1,531,588 for council's review and approval, subject to legal department review.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Cheatham.
I'd like to move to approve agenda item number 12 for Construction Services Incorporated Contract Amendment on 2405 Garrett Way Project, including legal department review.
Second.
We have a motion by Cheatham and a second by Lurick, right? Connie, could you please call the roll?
Cheatham?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Manon?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda item 13, bid agreement, public transit digital radio communication system project. Council may wish to consider the recommendations of staff for the following requests regarding the public transit digital radio communication system project. A, accept the bid received from Teton Communications Incorporated for 50 digital mobile radios, five digital portable radios, and six digital base radios in the amount of $39,137 plus installation cost, in the amount of $2,232, for the, for a total of $41,369. And if the bid is accepted, B, authorize the execution of the agreement between the city of Pokatello and Teton Communications Incorporated in the amount of $41,369, subject to legal department review. Funds for this project are available in public transit rural budget 008 and does not require any city match.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we accept the bid received from Teton Communications and that we authorize the execution of an agreement between the city and Teton Communications and, subject to legal department review.
Second.
We have a motion by President Johnston and a second by Manon. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Johnston?
Yes.
Manon?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda item 14, bid snowplow blower for airport. Council may wish to accept the recommendations of staff for the following requests regarding the purchase of a snowplow, a snowplow blower for the Pokatello Regional Airport. A, declare the bid from Kodiak America LLC as non-responsive for not meeting specifications as outlined in the bid documents, and B, accept the lowest responsive bid for, from Oshkosh Airport Products LLC in the amount of $649,267. The purchase will be funded 93.75% by FAA grant funds and 6.25% by airport passenger facility charge, PFC funds. The purchase is contingent upon the award of grants funded in FAA approval.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we declare Kodiak America LLC as a non-responsive bidder for not meeting the specifications as contained in the documents for solicitations of bids sent out to all prospective bidders. I further move that we declare Oshkosh Airport Products LLC as the low-responsive bidder for meeting specifications as contained in the documents for solicitation of bids sent out to all prospective bidders and therefore award the bid to Oshkosh Airport Products LLC.
Second.
We have a motion by President Johnston and a second by Bray. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Johnston?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Manon?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda item 15, reappropriation of FAA funds request airport. Council may wish to accept the recommendations of staff for the following requests regarding the reappropriation of FAA fund, FAA grant funds between Boise Airport and Pokatello Regional Airport. A, approve and authorize the mayor to sign all documents pertinent to the reappropriation of grant funds in the amount of $287,080 from Boise's fiscal year 2018 annual FAA entitlement grant funds to Pokatello Regional Airport. And if approved, B, approve and authorize the mayor to sign all documents pertaining to the reappropriation of Pokatello Regional Airport fiscal year 2019 annual FAA entitlement grant funds in the amount of $287,080 to Boise Airport. Each reappropriation will be subject to legal department review. The reappropriation will be used to complete airport improvement projects under the airports' previously approved grant number 41 that have increased in cost due to higher-than-estimated bids and scope increases. The reappropriation is contingent upon awarded of FAA grant funds, FAA and city of Boise approval. Councilwoman Adamson.
Mayor, I move that we approve agenda item 15, both A and B, and authorize you to sign any necessary documents, subject to legal review.
Second.
We have a motion by Adamson and a second by Johnston. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Adamson?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Manon?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda item 16, WPC Primary Pipe Replacement Project Request. Council may wish to consider the recommendations of staff for the following requests regarding the water pollution control WPC Primary Pipe Replacement Project. A, accept the bid received on August 29, 2018 from Star Corporation, who submitted the only bid in the amount of $180,306. And if the bid is accepted, B, authorize the execution of the documents related to the bid between the city of Pokatello and Star Corporation in the amount of $180,306. And C, approve the quote from Rainford Rent in the amount of $59,496.42 to provide bypass pumping services to the project area. Funding for the project is available in the WPC Reserve Fund, and documents related to the project are subject to legal, legal department review. Given the importance of this project, the WPC and current state of the building and construction environment, it is the recommendation of engineering and WP staff, WPC staff to approve the request.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilwoman Lurick?
I move that we approve the WPC Primary Pipe Replacement Project Requests, A, B, and C. Authorize you to sign any documents, subject to legal department review. See? Second.
We have, I think I got a C from, yeah. But I definitely got a second from Bray. So I'm going to take that. We have a motion from Lurick and a second from Bray, a C from Johnston. So Connie, could you please call the roll?
Lurick?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Manon?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda item 17A, an ordinance establishing a capital improvement fund under the provisions of Idaho Code 50-236. Counsel, how do you wish to have this ordinance read? Councilman Bray.
Mr. Mayor, I move that ordinance, agenda item number 17A, be read only by title and placed on final passage for publication, and that only the ordinance summary sheet be submitted for publication.
Second.
We have a motion by Bray and a second by Adamson. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Bray?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Manon?
Yes.
Thank you. Jared, could you please read the ordinance?
An ordinance of the city of Pokatello Municipal Corporation of Idaho, establishing a capital improvement fund under the provisions of Idaho Code 50-236, providing for the administration of said capital improvement fund, and providing that this ordinance and the provisions contained herein shall be in full force and effect from and after its passage, approval, and publication according to law, the rule requiring that an ordinance be read on three separate occasions having been dispensed with.
I declare that to be the final reading of the ordinance, should the ordinance pass.
Adamson?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
additional revenues, including grant funds received by the city, and to use previously unappropriated cash balance for the unanticipated expenses incurred by the city. Councilwoman Adamson.
Mayor, I move the ordinance, agenda item 17B, be read only by title and placed on final passage for publication, and that the entire ordinance be submitted for publication.
Second.
We have a motion by Adamson and a second by Bray. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Adamson?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Menon?
Yes.
Jared, would you please read the ordinance?
An ordinance of the city of Pocatello and municipal corporation of Idaho amending ordinance, ordinance number 2994, the appropriation ordinance for the fiscal period October 1, 2017 through September 30, 2018, providing for an increase in expenditures in the general fund, street fund, science and environment fund, water fund, utility billing fund, police grant fund, and retirement payout fund, which increases the total fiscal year expenditures by $1,139,205, providing that the revenue to pay for said increases shall be derived from transfers, grants, unexpected revenues, and previously unappropriated cash balances, providing that all other portions of the appropriation ordinance number 2994 not herein previously amended in ordinance number 3000 and ordinance number 3010 not herein shall remain in full force and effect, provided that this ordinance shall be in full force and effect from and after its passage, approval, and publication according to law, the rule requiring that an ordinance be read on three separate occasions having been dispensed with.
I declare that to be the final reading of the ordinance. Shall the ordinance pass?
Adamson?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Menon?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda item 18, discussion items. This time has been set aside due to discussion items not listed on the agenda. Items which appear somewhere else on the agenda will not be discussed at this time. The council is not allowed to take any official action at meeting, at this meeting on matters brought forward under this agenda item. Items will either be referred to the appropriate staff or scheduled on a subsequent agenda. You must sign in at the start of the meeting in order to be recognized. As a reminder, there's a 15-minute total time limit for this agenda item and three minutes per speaker. We'll go ahead and get started. Dr. Mike Riley.
Is this good for the people at home?
You bet.
Well, unfortunately, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, and before you again, talking about crosswalk safety. Over the past three months, I have used Yellowstone Avenue from my home, which is over by Lewis and Clark Elementary, all the way to the university on a daily basis. What I have observed is people not respecting the crosswalk. So what I'm proposing is that we look at some ways to solve this issue. It occurs to me that the timing of the signal lights is not the problem. It's not the fact that I have a really slow chair. This chair can go eight and a half miles an hour. So if you've ever seen me cross the street, I do it efficiently and as fast as possible. However, we have people turning left behind me and right in front of me, causing me to stop in the middle of the crosswalk because they don't respect the rights of pedestrians. So we're at a critical point here in my view that perhaps the mayor should develop a committee of some type to address crosswalk safety issues. I appreciate the fact that you have mentioned in your remarks to please slow down in school zones. And I realize that crosswalk markers are merely a suggestion to some drivers. But it's critically important for our safety to respect service animals and their people that they're with in crosswalks. So what I am proposing, what I'm asking for, is five additional police officers to be added to the department as soon as possible to conduct crosswalk safety inspections, which include citing people who do not stop. They can also work with local schools to see if there's issues when there's not a problem with people not respecting the crosswalk. And I can tell you from being in LA, Denver, Phoenix, I don't have these issues in other places. So again, all I'm asking for, I know it's a lot, but we need more officers. Thank you. And I'm, I'm within my three minutes, so.
Thank you. We'll move on to Andy Mildenhauer.
I'll cross to this side. They're probably doors.
Marshall's backing up. Backing up. That's right. Thank you, Mike.
Andy Mildenhauer, Pocatello firefighters, Local 187, mayor and council. I just wanted to come and, and let you guys know that we're going to be doing our annual Fill the Boot Drive this month. It will be September 20th, and we're going to be doing two intersections like we've done the last few years. They will be Highline and El Rancho and West Quinn and Pole Line. It'll be that Thursday, which will be the same day as your next council meeting, from 10 o'clock to 5:30. So that's all I've got.
Thank you. Thank you. That's all we have that has signed up. So thank you very much to the council for your work tonight, and we are adjourned.